Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty P M. Roll call, trustee Chuleta.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Mercer.
Present.
Mayor Protem Brumbolo.
Present.
Thank you. Opening prayer, trustee Chuleta, would you do the prayer and trustee Lopez, would you do the pledge?
Dear Lord Father God, we're coming for you and we just ask you to guide us tonight in the decisions we make and the decisions presented in front of us. Open our eyes, Lord Father God, to see clearly and help big people. We need to help in this community. Help us to make it a better place for people to grow and grow their families and raise their families. Bless veterans and first responders, Lord. Bless us through these times that we're going to be having soon where the weather's going to be getting warm and fires are going to start. Take care of us and all, God bless us in Jesus' name, my prayer. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, consider the Republic of America, our nation, our God, and be faithful with your brethren, as we are from.
Okay, we have a proclamation. State of New Mexico Executive Office that I need to read. State of New Mexico Executive Office, Santa Fe, New Mexico, proclamation. Whereas purchasing and management professionals play a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas purchasing and material management professionals spend billions of dollars every year and have a significant influence on economics throughout the world. And whereas the New Mexico Public Procurement Association Chapter of the National Institute of Government, purchasing and other professional purchasing associations engage in special efforts during the month of March to inform the public about the importance of the role played by the purchasing profession in business, industry, and government. And whereas those purchasing professionals who are certified through the Universal Public Purchasing Certification Council, which is accredited by the International Federation of Purchasing and Materials Management, obtain a certified professional public buyer, C P P, or certified professional public officer, C P P C license. Now therefore, I, Michelle Luhan Grisham, Governor of the State of New Mexico, do hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-three purchasing month throughout the state of New Mexico, done at the executive office this thirty-first day of January two thousand twenty-three. Witness my hand and the great seal of the state of New Mexico, Michelle Luhan Grisham, Governor. And then also signed by Maggie Toulouse Oliver, Secretary of State. Approval of the agenda. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda on action discussion, letter F, we are going to table that for now until our attorney can do more research on it. And with that, are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of tabling letter F, action item discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by trustee Chuleta, second by mayor Protem Brumbolo. Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Chuleta.
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have any, anybody to do for a public comment? If not, we'll move on. Approval of minutes, Board of Trustees Special Meeting, February sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Any questions on that? No? I need a motion to approve, please.
I make a motion to approve the Board of Trustees Special Meeting, February the sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and the Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, February the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Protem Brumbolo, second by trustee Lopez. Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Trustee Chuleta.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Action discussion, acceptance of municipal court cash journal for February two thousand twenty-three. Are there any questions?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the municipal court cash journal for February two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Lopez, second by trustee Chuleta. Mayor Protem Brumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Chuleta.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of finance report, February two thousand twenty-three.
Oh, that's me.
Yeah.
Good evening, board, mayor and trustees. So this is for the month of February of two thousand twenty-three. Our G R Ts, we received six hundred, or six hundred, I wish, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six oh one and fifty-two cents. It is down a little from last month. It's kind of fluctuating. We're not sure if it's because of the construction, because it is still higher than we had predicted. So we're still well off. The, we got nine oh nine, nine dollars and nine cents in I T G and sixteen hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents in C M P. For the month of February, we also received our small cities assistance for ninety thousand dollars. Our pooled cash is working beautifully. All our accounts are in balance, no negative cash balances. All the department heads are doing such an amazing job. I don't think I can stress that enough. The village is growing and maintaining and improving. And it's all because of the employees. They're really doing a great job. For the month of February, we paid one hundred and forty-four payables with a total of seventy-one payments. The total amount expensed was four hundred, four hundred seventy-four thousand, four ninety-five and seventy-six cents. We had seventy-eight, goodness, sixty-eight regular checks, two voided checks, and one bank dropped. I included in your finance report this month a recap page that we do, just so you can see where we are at this exact point. We're doing well. We're gaining. We're moving in the right direction. What else do I have? Sorry. I think that that is all that we have this month. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? If not, any motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the financial report for every twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by trustee Chuleta, second by mayor Protem Brumbolo. Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Trustee Chuleta.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero one zero, bar number seven.
All right. I don't know if you guys remember, in January, we had a bar that we did for seventy-five thousand dollars for the police department recruitment and retention stipends. So we received that grant and we put it in the one oh one. However, D F A has decided that they want to track this in its own fund. So they created a chart of accounts for this fund, two one two, in L G B M S, and asked us to do the same. So all we're doing in this bar is removing it from where we originally barred it in the one oh one and putting it in the two one two. And we added, or we broke it out based on what the taxes will be when they receive those stipends. So it'll have the lines to expense it out. So that's all this bar is, is moving what we already do.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. You hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero one zero, bar seven.
I'll second it.
Motion by mayor Protem Brumbolo, second by trustee Lopez. Trustee Chuleta.
Yes.
Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brumbolo.
Yes.
Thank you. Council of Governments Work Program Report.
We have Brandon Howell on the screen here.
Good evening, mayor. Trustees, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Did you guys need me to share my screen and pull up the reporter? Do you guys have it in front of you there?
They have it in front of them.
Okay. Thank you. So again, my name is Brandon Howell, planner at the Northwest New Mexico Council of Governments, here to present to you guys a report on our work program with the Village of Milan. We were intending to present this as a six-month report. We're a little late, so it's now an eight-month report. But it really is kind of just recapping what we've done to date for the fiscal year. So since July first, this is kind of a recap of the work that we've done. We've broken it out into kind of a direct services for the Village of Milan and then also regional initiatives as we are a regional planning organization. And so just kind of working my way through the document, I wanted to, to again, just kind of remind you guys, this is all tied to the annual membership that the Village of Milan pays into the Council of Governments. And in return, we provide technical and planning services for the village. That, that annual membership is kind of broken out over an hour time period. And so we budgeted a hundred and fifty-four hours based on the amount of funding that was provided to the Council of Governments. To date, we have used a hundred and sixty-one, so we're over. That doesn't mean we're going to stop assisting the Village of Milan. This is kind of just an internal benchmark that we like to keep for ourselves to ensure that we are allowed spending time for members in our region. And so we'll continue to, continue to assist the Village of Milan. We'll probably far exceed the one fifty-four, but that's okay. We've got a lot of work to do for the Village of Milan and we're going to continue to do so until the next year. So our report that we provided has really planning highlights and project highlights, and then of course, the regional initiatives. For the planning highlights, one of the things that we've done to date was we're thinking about prepping a affordable housing plan at the county level, which will encompass the Village of Milan. And so what we've done to date was we've talked to mortgage finance authority at the state. We brought them in for a presentation to the commission. And then we sat down with them to kind of go over what the contents of that plan needs to be, how hard it would be for us to prep it ourselves. And so Sebo County, along with the Council of Governments, is going to kind of lead that. The nice thing for the village is it will allow the village to utilize that plan to adopt and enact and establish its own affordable housing program if it wanted to. It eliminates the need for developing a plan for yourselves. And so we're going to wrap the Village of Milan into that as well. The affordable housing program, if the village does establish that program, basically what it does is it allows the Village of Milan to assist developers and developments who want to bring housing into the community with infrastructure, donation of land, those type of activities. So it's a way to get around the anti-donation clause for housing purposes. The next is the Grants of Milan Comprehensive Transportation Safety Action Plan. I think in the fall, the C O G was notified by New Mexico Department of Transportation that there were some research and planning funds available. And we decided that, you know, we asked the Village of Milan and the City of Grants if you guys would like to conduct a comprehensive safety action plan for transportation purposes. The reason we asked that was we anticipated, we reviewed a lot of the bipartisan infrastructure law transportation programs, and having a comprehensive transportation safety action plan was one of the criteria. It also is just a general, generally a good plan to have for transportation purposes as we move forward and do a lot of transportation projects in the Village of Milan. So the Village of Milan contributed fifteen thousand dollars. The City of Grants contributed fifteen thousand dollars. And then we were able to secure one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we're going to hire consultants to do some data analysis, write a plan, get us prepped and get us ready and eligible for big, large pots of federal funding through the bipartisan infrastructure law. One of the projects that we're targeting now and that will probably be highlighted in this plan is Elkins Road from end to end. And so we anticipate that being, you know, many millions of dollars. And so the bipartisan infrastructure law program has that capacity to fund those types of projects with that large of amount. And so we went out to R F P a month ago. We didn't get any proposals in, so we reposted. We are getting interest now because we're reminding firms to send us proposals. And so we're hoping to select a firm or firms multiple in April. And so essentially, we're looking at getting this started maybe June or July, getting that planning process going. The next is the Drainage Master Plan. This has been a longstanding item for all three entities in Sebo County. The plan is about ten or so years old. It's been heavily utilized and it's, it's, it's kind of resulted in millions of dollars of drainage infrastructure projects, such as the airport road drainage, the San Jose channel improvements. Some of those items in the Village of Milan, a lot of items in City of Grants, kind of resulted as as a, as a part of this planning process. Again, that's ten years old. The county is taking the lead to update this plan. What we've done with the Council of Governments is we secured services from the Army Corps of Engineers to conduct surveys. So basically redo the mapping of, for the plan. And so we're hoping to get that started as soon as possible. As for project highlights, we once again assisted the Village of Milan with the annual I C I P update. We kind of meet, we meet with the manager and projects coordinator, and we discuss all the projects, present a preliminary order, add new projects and take projects off. And so we once again assisted the village with that process there. We also again provided legislative technical assistance. As you guys are aware, we do kind of coordinate the annual Sebo area legislative forum. It looks like we're going to be hosting that forum in Milan, hopefully next year. So that's something to look forward to there. A quick highlight from the legislature, I sent Linda and Denise this information this morning. But we have tentatively two point five million dollars in capital alleys for the swimming pool. And then we also have two hundred thousand for public works vehicles, and that's in the legislature right now. There's a whole handful of other state programs that we've anticipated looking into. Again, we have capacity building options that you guys have secured fifty thousand dollars for this past year. They're putting more money in that program there, so we might be able to continue to bring in consultants into the Village of Milan and have that capacity building grant pay for the services there as opposed to having them come directly from the Village of Milan. We also noticed that the regional recreation grant program is getting funded again. The nice thing is if this two point five million for the swimming pool stays and gets approved by the governor, we can possibly apply for that regional recreation program for the gap, for the remaining, and get the project done completely. And so this is a good year for the Village of Milan to get all the money that it needs for the swimming pool. So we also, last year, kind of worked on a transportation project fund application with the Village of Milan and Wilson and Company for Airport Road Phase Three. Obviously, we did get awarded that in August and September, one point one nine five million. And so we're looking at, as part of our regional transportation planning organization process, we're looking at basically identifying the next project for the next year's cycle. And so we've been working closely with Denise and Linda to identify the projects. And so we're going to engage in another application cycle for transportation project fund there. Just recently, within the last week, week and a half, I've been working on submitting requests to the congressional delegation for appropriation funding. And so we're putting in for wastewater system improvements and again, swimming pool improvements as well. And so we're crossing our fingers. I submitted forms to Senator Luhan, Senator Heinrich, and Representative Ledger Fernandez. And so it's kind of a process that has reestablished itself in the last couple of years. And so we're working with the Village of Milan to apply for those funds there. The capacity building grant, again, the village was awarded fifty thousand dollars. The village entered into an undergovernmental services agreement with the Council of Governments. We intend, we then took that fifty thousand dollars, issued an R F P. We selected a group of consultants and then we have issued a task order for the Village of Milan, for those consultants, to start prepping applications for water and wastewater through the clean water, for Stanley Road and Bridge, for the Transportation Project Fund, for Elkins Road, through the bipartisan infrastructure law, and then for the Milan Industrial Park for Lita and E D A. And so we're not going to submit those applications, obviously without village concurrence, but we're prepping those applications and getting them ready. And so this is again, that fifty thousand dollars that was awarded to the Village of Milan through the capacity building grant at the state. Next is I forty planning grants. This was appropriation through the legislature to New Mexico D O T. We worked the Village of Milan to put in for Horizon Boulevard interchange planning and also a possible, we're looking at preliminary engineering and feasibility of an additional interchange at the Pole Canyon Sawmill Road area, specifically looking at tying into the Milan Industrial Park. Obviously, both are tied into economic development initiatives. Both are tied into the Milan Industrial Park, but you know, Horizon specifically is also tied into the Village of Milan and just the, the, the large amounts of freight traffic that comes through that area there. So we're going to conduct some planning for those two interchanges and then subsequently figure out optimal design solutions and improvements for those corridors in the future. Lastly, for the Village of Milan, we, we conducted a public participation process for the C D B G grant program. We conducted two public hearings. We gathered projects. We kind of conducted a preliminary vetting process. But ultimately, we decided, and the villagers decided, that we'll hold off on an application this, this year for C D B G. But the work that we've done to date is, is going to, it'll still be relevant for next year's cycle. So it's not lost the work that we've done to date for that process. And so we'll reengage that process next year. And again, if we decide to apply, we'll go ahead and utilize that information and work that we did this year. So the next section is regional initiatives. I won't go over, go over this too much because this is kind of a large encompassing, multi-jurisdictional work that we've done. Obviously, we are a economic development district, so we do a lot of economic development work. We assisted numerous entities with Economic Development Administration grants and were awarded numerous grants. We also utilize a lot of the E D A funds, Economic Development Administration funds for the Milan Industrial Park. So taking the master plan and getting it to one hundred percent design, we use, we utilize a lot of that funding in Milan. We set up our revolving loan fund for small business support. From our office is going to each county, visiting the municipalities and the communities and talking to businesses and seeing if they need small loans for business support. And so he's been out to Grants and Milan, visited with a few, so we'll continue to promote that program as well. I'm going to skip a few. I think one of the bigger things is we're trying to set up a regional dashboard on our website that'll encompass various forms of data, economic data, social data, demographic data. What we're trying to do is set up a platform for our members to utilize if they are writing their own grants or if they're needing quick, quick information for whatever purposes it may be. We're trying to set that up so that our members can access that pretty quick. Because there's so much data out there, it's kind of, it kind of gets daunting when you go to look for something. We just want to make it a one-stop shop for our members so that they can be so confident in the data that they're obtaining and using. Lastly, I just want to say, you know, again, we are a member-based organization. We do collect membership, membership funds from member governments. What you have in your report says twenty-nine to one, but I recalculated based on our I forty planning grant awards. And we're, we're at thirty-five to one, and that's in a regional context. So essentially, what we've done is we've taken the membership dues that are paid to the Council of Governments, leverage that with annual federal and state contracts to, that allows us to establish our base for our salaries and our employees. And we in turn kind of utilize that framework to bring in roughly forty-eight million dollars into the region as a whole. And so with that, I can stand for any questions.
Any questions? Sir. Good work. Do we need a motion on that one? Thank you. Okay, ordinance two ninety-three, amended Village of Milan Criminal Code ordinance two seventy-four, and repealing all ordinances in conflict hereof.
Miss Mayor, members of the board, as you know, we are in the process of updating all of our ordinance that require an update to become current with, with our current laws. And this is one of those, it basically updates the criminal code, tells the courts, or gives the courts the guidelines to what they can do. And we are only allowed to do the, the the petty misdemeanors. So this, this also outlines those items.
Was there a lot of change to any of these or not?
There was very little change. But we had, we had more than one that was active. So that's part of our cleanup.
I have one question on, on the, it was on page nineteen of twenty-nine, on fireworks restrictions. It outlined what fireworks were outlawed here in the Village of Milan. Who will enforce or inspect the fireworks here at the Village of Milan? Or is it going to be inspected at the, in the stands? Or if they see somebody shooting fireworks up, how is that going to, are they going to enforce that?
That in the past has been enforced by the fire department. They do the inspection. They actually issue the, the the permit. And we will have a next month, I believe, the fireworks ordinance, which, which is updated. And instead of like last year, it was only good for a certain period of time. And the one that we will be presenting to you for your consideration will be for year round. And I believe some of that is And I believe some of that is uh, Denise, it gives you permission to do some of that uh permitting. So we're, we're kind of bringing it off, a part of it off of the fire chief and putting it in house into very capable hands.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I had one on the on the section ten dash zero one two, the lottery. How does that affect uh fundraising, private fundraising and stuff like that? Is it affected at all?
Zero one two.
Yeah, ten dash zero one two. Page six of twenty-one.
Six of, yeah, yeah. Well, obviously, you could, it's kind of affect fundraising you're doing and and the, you know, the level of which you're doing it. But small types of, you know, fundraisers should not be affected by. We don't want somebody running a, you know, running a a pull tab establishment out of their, out of their basement, things like that. That's what we're looking at.
Oh, so normal fundraising is okay then? Okay.
Anybody else? Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve uh ordinance two ninety-three amending the Village of Milan Criminal Code Ordinance two seventy-four and repealing the ordinances in conflict.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tembrambllo, second by Trustee Archuleta. Trustee Lopez?
Yeah.
Trustee Mercer?
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembrambllo?
Yes.
Thank you. Decision of red clay for infield at Kearns Park.
Denise, would you like to? So with the help of uh Jack, we found a company that does have the clay here in state. Um, we've received bids for, um, we have a remaining balance of a hundred and ten thousand, six eighty-two eighty-one. Um, we've received two bids, both in the amount of twenty-four nine seventy-five for each build. Uh, this will be a three-inch thick placement of the red infield play. Um. They'll remove three inches of dirt from them now and put the clay in place. Um. They are a state contracted vendor and I am asking for your approval for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars if you want both fields. Twenty-four nine seventy-five if you only want one field.
Uh, what are they gonna do to dirt that's removed?
Uh, they'll remove it in our guys' will, will put it in the shop.
Awesome.
Okay, we'll take one field at a time. Uh. For for later. Gee, um, do I hear a motion to approve?
Which uh?
Do you want to do both at the same time or?
We have the money to do both, but it's up to you.
But do we, do we approve both of them at the same time?
You can do both at the same.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to do both of the fields with uh the red clay. Both the mountain.
I'll, I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Archuleta, second by Trustee Mercer. Mayor Pro Tembrambllo?
Yes.
Trustee Mercer?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, decision on agreement language for facilities at Soccer Complex.
We gotta do the, we gotta do the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Decision for for fencing and dugouts at Kearns Field.
Okay, so also on the agenda for Kearns Field, we have the outfield fencing. This will be the second field. Uh, this will include the entire outfield and two chain link dugouts with a shaded top. Um, this estimate is from Tri-West Fencing. They're also state contracted vendor. Um. This will also include, um, if you'd like, a safety cap for the outfield fences. That's that yellow protective covering. We have seen some of the kids already jumping that fence, so we're gonna also put a gate on the outfield so they can if the ball goes over there, jump the fence, they can run through the gate. Um, we're asking for an approval for all items for forty-two thousand, seven thirty-six twenty for Tri-West Fencing.
Questions? No, thank you. I need a motion to approve please.
I make a motion to approve the fencing uh and the dugouts for Kearns Field.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tembrambllo, second by Trustee Archuleta. Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembrambllo?
Yes.
Trustee Mercer?
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of grant application of Milan Police Department.
Yep.
Mister Soccer Field.
Am I going too fast?
A little bit.
Okay. I'm glad I have somebody to tell me. Decision on agreement language for facilities at Soccer Field.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, as you requested, um, we have developed a an agreement to turn this uh complex over to the Soccer Association. Uh, they would be responsible for uh making sure that uh upkeep was done on it. If there are any, any uh changes that you would like, we'd like to know that. And we'd like to get your guidance and and approval to have this completed and signed so that we can turn this over to the Soccer Association for the kids.
Are there any questions on that?
What equipment and staff do they have to maintain that food?
They would have to make sure that uh it's kept clean. Picked up. They'd have to make sure that they're cleaned.
What this though, isn't it, isn't it also mentioning as far as grass being cut? Just that, that's not in this?
I don't believe that.
So this is just as far as?
Just for the uh, the the uh concession stand, the restroom, and the storage.
That's just keeping it up kept and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. Try to double check on that.
Hey, I think it's a good agreement.
Mm-hmm.
You hear a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the languages of the uh, facilities at the Soccer Field.
I would also ask that you give us permission to proceed with getting this assigned.
Signed.
Assigned by the, the Association.
AYSO, right.
We haven't approached them yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So with that added, I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Mercer, second by Trustee Archuleta. Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembrambllo?
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta?
Yes.
Trustee Mercer?
Yes.
Okay, I hope we're in the right track now. Approval of grant application from Milan Police Department.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, I have uh the Police Chief Carl here uh to uh address this this request for a grant application. And at this time, I'd like to ask him to come forward.
We have time to hear you twice?
He's gonna make it short. I, I am. Good evening, Mister, Mister Mayor, members of the board. I know uh our mayor was hurrying to get to me. That's why I was jumping, so I I felt his enthusiasm there. Um, I did request these uh approval to apply for um to grants. Um, I just got this information less than geez, about three weeks, three and a half weeks ago, so I was already behind with the deadlines approaching. Um. So to keep it short as possible, um, the body camera grants. We need to update our body cameras when we're going to this new Tyler system. Um, we've gotten by the past year with the twos because we don't, we, we don't have to pay for them. So I didn't want to add, take on another charge, but we got to shift to the body cameras three uh Axon threes to um download or to be compliant with our Tyler plan for all three of our agencies. So the code code we got was fifty thousand, I think it was over seventy-four months. Um, the grants that I was applying for, their awards, I think the smallest award was five hundred thousand, so it would have been a stretch to get it anyway. So I started looking in other areas um through the municipal league. I was able to find a way to get assistance. Um, and I'm working with Candy on um the details. We have set up a meeting next week. But short version, we were gonna be paying ninety-three hundred dollars a month for our body camera. With the money I was able to find through the municipal league, we're only paying forty-two hundred. So it knocked off fifty maths, it wasn't my best subject, fifty-one hundred a year. So I think um that's gonna help. And with the increase in LEPF, um, that saves us about twenty-four thousand over five years. So um, so that one, uh, I know it's on here for approval, but I don't think I would meet the deadline, but we already have something in place. The other one, um again, I missed because I just found out about them and our deadline here was approaching on March twenty-first. Uh, we've been having all these meetings um with different entities on mental health and uh officer response, crisis team response. So I've been looking for grants to pay for that. I think at this time um, the Clinic on Roosevelt in Grants did receive some grant funding that could assist us with this. Um, it would have been, it would have been difficult to maintain with our staffing, our current um experience we have in our department and all the projects that I have going on and that I want to get to. It would have been very difficult to take this on right now. So um, I'm hoping to work with them with with the grant funding they got, because that's uh gonna spread, be spread out through the county. And that'll assist us with um my concerns on certain individuals we have in our community, which we've already begun um taking care of one that we've dealt with uh thirty-five times since January. So uh, that's the need I'm talking about that we need in our community. But we got things in place that I'm finding out. There are plenty of grants out there that I'm starting to look for. There's money available, but this one's gonna be a little bit rushed and I don't want to rush things because I want to um put the numbers in place. So I do thank you for your time. I know I could have kept this short, Mister Mayor, but um at this time, um it's on there. I thank you, but I think we have some things in place that I don't need to apply for right now.
Are you suggesting we table this until a later date or?
No, no. Um, if I could get this one going and submit it in the next four days, we'll see where it goes. But we have things in place in the county that I I'm just getting aware of that's gonna help us. So I guess no action. I don't, I don't. Be disapproval or disapproval. Um, I just.
So it basically is up for discussion now, instead of?
We don't have to take action.
Okay, yeah. So thank you guys. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, now we move to um task order with on-call engineer Wilson and Company for Airport Phase Two and Three Design Amendments to Comply with the Grant Agreement Engineer Estimate Project Manual and Building Services.
Okay, so as you all know, we've received uh three different types of funding for Phase Two and Three, which is the bridge and the remainder of Airport Road. Um, what we have in front of us today is a task order with Wilson and Company to update the plans to match what's been done on Phase One. We found the water line wasn't where we thought it originally was, so that'll need to be amended in the plans. Um, we are going to shoot for water sewer, uh drainage, roadway, sidewalk. I'll give up um with these two sections. And what this task order does, it allows the engineer to help us with the bidding phase as well as the design phase. I am asking for your approval for Wilson and Company in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventies. Do not include construction management. So after the bidding phase is complete, if we do decide what we want them to do, the construction management, which is like they have on site here every day, then we will have a different task order.
I think we should.
That was per twenty-seven.
Do you hear a motion?
Twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five and seventies.
So okay, so I make a motion that we do the task order with on-call engineer Wilson and Company for Airport Phase One and Two Design.
I'll second it.
So two and three.
Two and three.
Sorry, two and three.
Yeah, I'm gonna second it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tembrambllo, second by Trustee Mercer. Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembrambllo?
Yes.
Trustee Mercer?
Yes.
Thank you. Updates, fire chief.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. For the month of February, we had seventy-six calls uh for being such a short month. And the prior month of January, the calls went up about one percent. Um, fire calls went up a little bit too. Attached to my report, I did lately, the last few months, if you guys didn't notice, have been putting a uh an incident type per zone. So I just wanted to go over that real quick. The zones are broke out with between Grants, uh Milan, and we call it Northern Zone, anything north of Milan or and Grants. And South Zone, also south of Milan and Grants, in the West and East Zones. In February, we only had one fire in Milan. I think it was just a really small brush fire or something. Uh, we had seven fires total in Grants. One fire up at Lobo Canyon Fire Department. Two fires in San Rafael. I think those were both brush fires. And three fires in Bluewater. So most of our fires are happening outside of Milan, um which is great. I like that. Makes us look safer. And our, I think our community education and risk reduction is program has been working out. With that, March twenty-fifth, we're doing a Sound the Alarm event with the partnership with the Red Cross and the State Fire Marshal's Office. This is also the main event that we do for risk reduction, community risk reduction. And it also gives us ISO points, so our insurances go down. That event's March twenty-fifth, it's Saturday from ten to two. And that event is, we're gonna go around the, we picked up part of the community in the the village specifically um to go install smoke alarms and for free. The smoke alarms are given by the Red Cross. And right now in my office, I got like a hundred and something smoke alarms. I went to Farmington to their event a couple of weekends ago. And having the fire department present, these people were more susceptible to us to these people going in and installing the smoke alarms. And then with partnership with us, they felt more comfortable, so they didn't see strangers just coming into their house and stuff. And and also statistically like chief likes statistics over there. More lives are saved even by a smoke alarm. And then also for the hearing impaired people, they do install those bed bed shakers. So if they can't hear the smoke alarm, their bed will shake if it's, if it's at night, if they're laying in their bed. So I think it's a great, great start on part of our risk reduction in the community, specifically in Milan. And we hope that uh this first event's gonna be a good kicker. Um, the State Fire Marshal's Office will be there as well, and he's already talked to the ISO inspectors and everything, and they've already given us big credit for doing this type of stuff.
Without event, you guys have all the houses you guys are going to already, or how does that work?
Yeah, right now we picked from, I think it's Archer, Archer or Yocum down on that end, Carver Oil. And we're gonna come all the way to Airport Road. That's over a hundred and fifty vacant, or not vacant, but houses that are being lived in right now. Um, we don't do churches and businesses. And what we're gonna do starting tomorrow, in fact, we're gonna go start hanging uh door hangers on on their doors. So they, they know that we're gonna be coming around in on that day. And then also, uh I got an agreement with the Red Cross as well to continue this, not just that day. So if So if later on, I know boss here already asked if we can go out to her house and install some. I'll be able to do that with that agreement. And then all I got to do is fill out the paperwork when I do do her house and then send them the paperwork so that way it could be tracked. And then next year, we'll do a pick a different area of the village and have one a big one-day event as well. We're just gonna keep it going. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback or the Red Cross has and the State Fire Marshals have. And they really like this this event that we're doing. A little bit more on facility build on the phase two of our fire station remodel, which you guys approved here not too long ago for the upstairs. We're still in the process of C I Ds. We're waiting for the finalization on the design, the drawings and everything. So those should be coming here and I'm hoping in the next month and a half or two. And then they'll start demolition and remodel. Thank you to Michael and Robert. They came and they moved our internet services downstairs, back downstairs. They put a really nice I T room in and nice switchboards. And the internet's working great. Other than that, I don't have much else, just to keep this short. If you guys have any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Thanks, sir.
All right.
Police chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Good evening. You have my report and code enforcement and animal control as well. So I'll just kind of fly through this again, pick out some of the highlights. I always stress the auto accidents and the medical calls. If you notice, our medical calls were a lot lower last month, which is great. You know, it occupies our time, but it also means we have a some issues going on with our community, maybe with health or or something. But it's it's always a positive to see that that number a lot lower from the month previous. And the auto accidents are right right around the same. So again, most of those have been our truck stops. So we're still working on plans to to tackle that issue. We had our monthly coffee with the cop again. Trustee Lopez, thank you for showing up. It's it's always a pleasure when you're there and myself and other officers appreciate it. We had a decent turnout this time, so it was it was it was very good. So thank you again for stopping by. Our new officer was supposed to be here. He's he's progressing while in field training. He's moving to night shift on Monday for a different training officer. And he's progressing quickly. He's he's got almost four years of experience. So we didn't anticipate too long on field training, just getting to know the area and how we do things with the Milan Police Department and the Village of Milan. So he's doing well. Stick with the theme about trying to find money so it doesn't come out of the village budget. I already discussed the body cameras, how we were able to save some money. And another thing is our docs, our charging docs for our laptops that we need in our squads. It was the quote we got was for twenty-one thousand. D W I compliance has hooked us up again and they're taking care of that whole entire cost. So that's twenty-one thousand we're gonna save on our law enforcement protection fund this next go-around in July that we could use for other equipment and training. So D W I compliance has been good to us. And the president over there as well is me. So, yeah. No, but the money was there. Their current compliance officer in charge, she said there was about forty thousand that they had to get rid of before June. And she asked us what we needed, and this is something we badly needed. So thank you, D W I compliance. Our flock safety cameras that I bring up every month because they're I think they're wonderful. I mentioned before, we haven't paid on them since twenty-twenty. So talking to the rep, they took responsibility for that and they're only gonna charge us for the current year. So we saved two years of funding right there. So that was great. The last thing I have is we have a violent or we had a violent offender in our community that's caused problems for us for years. And we just completed a jury trial and he was found guilty. So a great job by the officers that participated in that. Any questions?
Questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Projects.
Parker Complex. There were several months in the road on this project, but the project substantial completion is pretty much done. We're waiting for final inspections to pass, which I believe have passed according to Jack today. We need to set up a ribbon-cutting ceremony, but I would like to wait for the drive path to be complete. Then we can invite the state reps in and do maybe something with the newspaper for the website. Airport Road Phase One is moving quickly. The weather is finally allowing them to do concrete. The project is on schedule. The approximate completion date is April twenty-eighth. It was originally a hundred and fifty days. We added an additional. We added up to a hundred and eighty days for the water lines. And right now, the water lines and service lines are all active throughout that project. So those are in and they are on. Airport Road Phase Two and Three, you approved the task order today. So hopefully, we can get that project rolling and out to bid by maybe next month. And the sewer system design, we had some issues with the R F P that we have for on-call services. So we had to go out to R F P for engineering services on that project. The R F P published last Sunday and published again this Sunday. That is funded by Clean Water Revolving, Clean Water State Revolving. Cottonwood Design, we should be having a sixty percent design here in the next week or so. We did get some news that there is a Maverick Gas Station interested in coming into that corner lot there. So we're thinking that into consideration with plans as well. Swimming pool, the contractor started, found a gas line sticking out on the roof that was kind of in conflict with the project. So they're getting that fixed. They should be starting demolition on Monday. The pool will remain open throughout the project duration. Fire Department Phase Two, Daniel gave that update, so you guys know who that one is. Currie's Park, now that you guys have approved the purchase of the red plate and the fencing and dugouts, we'll get that project rolling hopefully next week or so. Public Works Equipment, we ordered that dump truck. We are still waiting on a bin. The people we ordered it from are doing their best to get it rushed, but it's it's been a situation. All the vehicles are like that. Anything special order or customize is taking time. Stanley Lip Station is out for bid. Bid documents are due back April twelfth. Hopefully, at the April meeting, we'll have a presentation on that to get it out for construction. Water system improvements, we have an update meeting today. We are looking for a they'll be rehabilitating all three of the wells that we use every day. And two of them will be replacements. The tank improvements will also be included. Skater system will also be included along with many other things. Motel Drive, as you heard, we've had a bunch of issues with that road. We will be, we're trying to get that painted. So we found the original, I guess, the subcontractor that came in when they did the construction on that project. And they're getting us a bid together to get those lines painted on that road. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? No, thank you. Village manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for your time and your service. At this time, I want to go over what's been happening. The it's budget time. Everybody's stressing because we're working on budgeting for expenses, income, potential income in between the proposals the legislator has been making. It's been kind of a nightmare at times, but Kami's doing a great job at working through that, even though she panics when we talk about touching our balances. I made a tour of the Airport Road project the other day with Jack. They were pouring the curbs there. Yeah, I know it seems like it's taking forever, but actually, they're progressing quite quickly due to the weather. So it's starting to look pretty good. It's starting actually to look like a road lane. Leann and her team have done a great job preparing for the Easter carnival. They have almost everything in place and ready to go. Home Steak, Rockin Sixty-Six and Blake's are also supporting the Easter carnival. And we wish to thank them for their service to the community. We are working with the county on our county risk assessment plan. This is required for any kind of FEMA funding, especially for disasters. So we will also be included in that. And and if we have to apply for being for funding, we'll be able to use theirs. The pool is going to be offering swimming lessons in this during spring break. This is a trial time. And they are now open for six days a week. And as Daniel and Denise mentioned, we had the walkthrough at the fire station for the second phase, which is the top story of that building. Contractors, they should also mention the contractors started on the roof work at the swimming pool. We have an opening that you all allowed us to make. And we've hired Victoria, who is presently our janitor, to fill in as in the cashier position. And she will start Monday. She'll be trained by Gabby and Eileen. The county will be requesting for funding support. In at an April meeting, they've asked that if we are interested, if we would provide them this month with a letter of interest. And we'll be working on that next week. And for the water, the the utility team has worked on several sewers and water issues this month. No large hiccups there. They are definitely part of our unsung heroes. They are called out in the at all hours of the day and night, including weekends, and many times get blamed for issues they have no control over or that are on customers' property. And yes, we have some that don't even want to go on vacation because of their devotion and to not only their job, but to the village. So we thank them for that. The streets, they are continuing to clean up the streets around. Okay. They are continuing to clean up the streets around the truck stops. They've replaced missing signs and posts. They have been burning and cutting weeds and repairing fence. And at this time, I'd like to stop for a moment to introduce our new officer.
It's not being.
Yeah, I I apologize. I gave I told him to be here at six-thirty anticipating time, so that's on me, Mr. Mayor, member of the board. But this is Officer Nick Candelaria. Like I said, he brings about four years' experience with us, very proactive when it comes to narcotics and enforcement in that area. And he's very excited to be here. And we've already heard some good things about him. And I've seen good things myself and officers training him, the field training officers, are saying he's doing a wonderful job, so.
And he's polite?
He's very polite. He is, he is. And if you look at his boots, he we can learn a lot about his boots here. So this is Officer Candelaria.
Good to meet you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
No chance to talk.
So and as I continued, the building maintenance has been our work. Overhead lights, emergency lights at the pool. They repaired the the ceiling at the pool. There was a hole in the ceiling and it's repaired. He's replaced damaged tiles in the police department, installed grab bars and painted the new village hall, patched patched the H R, the new H R office. It had some places that required being patched after we removed the walls for the the little little cubbies that they had for people. He's painted the interior of Victor Street Building. He has been keeping the parking lot and the area around the village hall clean. He's even swept and shoveled stones and snow and leaves off of the roof to help reduce some of the leakage that we have in one of the one of the rooms. He's repaired and replaced lights and emergency lighting at the gym. And the mechanic has installed plow connections and adjusted mounts for the plow. It's now ready to use. He's repaired the bobcat and the sweeper. He's changed all the oil in the P D units and replaced a cracked window, repaired a the truck that Joe Ray drives. He's also replaced the battery in the manager's car and the windshield on one of the water departments. And with that, I stand forth. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, now we're going to executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, which is closed pursuant to N M S A nineteen-seventy-eight, section ten, dash fifteen, dash one, H two.
I make motion to go into executive session.
What second motion?
Motion by Trustee Archuleta, second by Mayor Pro Tembrambo. Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez. Mayor Pro Tembrambo.
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now going to executive session. Okay, now we're going to reconvene our meeting. And motions regarding matters discussed in executive session, limited to those specified, a motion for closure. And then no final action was taken in executive session as per New Mexico statutes, section ten, dash fifteen, dash one, H. I need a motion to go back into.
I make motion to reconvene.
Motion by Trustee Archuleta, second by Trustee Mercer. Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembrambo.
Yes.
Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta.
Yes.
Thank you. Organizational chart for the Village of Milan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, you have requested and we have looked at and reorganized our organizational chart. We've added, we've removed a sergeant and put in a lieutenant and a detective, removed a patrol officer. The detective will also be a patrol officer, is my understanding. The chief can answer to that. We've also moved the mechanic under me and removed him from being under the the maintenance director. director. So right now, we're asking that you would approve this new chart of organizational chart.
If there's any questions?
With the variance, I'm sorry, with the variance of the, on the job titles for the police?
I'll make a motion that we approve the organizational chart with the variance for the job titles on the, under the police department.
I'll second that.
Motion by Trustee Mercer, second by Trustee Lopez, Trustee Archuleta.
Yes.
Mayor Brambolo.
Yes.
Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of salary budget for year twenty-four for Village of Milan employees.
Okay, Ms. Candy, you want to address that, but members of the board, Mr. Mayor, Candy has prepared for this year with those issues that has happened to in other areas, our budget constraints. She has prepared a salary chart, and we're asking that you would approve it if you have questions, because Candy's here to answer those questions.
I think we all went through it pretty much, so if there are no questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary budget for fiscal year twenty-four for the Village of Milan employees.
Motion by Trustee Archuleta, second by Mayor Brambolo. Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Brambolo.
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we go to the board comments. Trustee Lopez.
Police for the hard work of the nation. Getting done in the soccer field, I see improvements.
Trustee Mercer.
Just like to say, tell Candy and the rest of the office staff, thank you for all the dedication and getting, getting the budget prepared just so that we can make another no-finding audit. I was gonna also give a welcome to Officer Candelaria, but he didn't return, so just gonna extend a welcome to him. Also, I wanted to give kudos to Police Chief for thinking forward, trying to create these new job titles for future funding, to help with the funding and going after those grants to help us out financially, and all, everybody that's just doing their part to try to help with the funding in their departments. Thank you, guys.
Trustee Archuleta.
No comments.
Mayor Brambolo.
No comment. I think everybody covered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That gives me time, so. Okay, you know, every now and then, there's people that, Mr., I would like to offer the family of Mr. Adolfo Chato Rubina condolences. People didn't know too much about, about this individual. He retired, he worked for the Village of Milan for many, many years, retired from here, very quiet, very humble man, but the most impressive thing about, about, about him was, he was very highly decorated. He was, he was an army veteran, very highly decorated. He never bragged about it, he never, he got the, the top three. He had the Purple Heart, the Bronze Star, and the Silver Star. That is amazing, and, but you never, you know, he never flaunted his, plus all the other decorations that, that he probably got from, for, for that. I, I just wanted to pay tribute to this man, and that, that just tells me that he, he did, he did more than his share when he was in service. Now, all our employees, I, I think our employees do such a tremendous job that it is easy for myself, and I'm sure for the trustees, to walk around the village, to drive around the village, to go to stores, just to hear, and compliment our employees without having to, with a straight face, you know what I'm saying? Instead of trying to brag too much about it, it's because, everything is because of our employees, and, you know, without, without, without them, we know in the past, without good employees, which, you know, our village doesn't function very well. Most of the time, I talk about the high school sports, but today, I wanna talk about the academics of the high school. I went to the, to the awards presentation last night at the, at the school, and you would be amazed as to how many, how many students actually maintain a four-point-oh or better at the high school. It, it was, I, I, you know, to me, it was mind-boggling, because I never thought there was that many geniuses here in Grand San Milan, but there's, there's a lot of really smart people here, students here in, in the Village of Milan, and that's not counting. They had to, for, for all of them, they had to get a certificate or a letter, maintain a three-point-oh for two consecutive semesters, and, I don't know, I don't know how many, but there was a, a lot, a lot of them, and it, it's, I like to, like to bring that up instead of, it's usually the sports for me, but I like to bring that up, too. And tomorrow, we need, well, I don't, I shouldn't say we need to, but it's St. Patrick's Day, you know, green or pinch, whatever the case may be. And also, enjoy your Easter with, with the families, you know. I have a tradition in my house, the golden egg has a twenty-dollar bill. I have one-dollar bills and a ton of other eggs, so everybody will be happy, except, especially the one that gets the twenty-dollar bill, the golden egg, and, and it's a lot of fun for the kids. It's a blast, 'cause, and, and that's what it's all about. Like always, if you can donate to St. Jude's Children's Hospital, please do so. When you see a veteran, thank her or him for their services and sacrifices, and God bless the Village of Milan, and may God bless America. Here we go. Village of Milan Easter Carnival, April first, two thousand twenty-three, from eleven to two, eleven AM to two PM at Kearns.
If there's an appetite, there may be a form present, no action will be taken, so all of you can.
Thank you. Thank you. Nothing gets past this young lady. At Kearns Park, fifteen hundred Stanley Roads. Planning and zoning meeting, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at four thirty PM. Village, Village of Milan Trick for Trash, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from eight AM to two PM at Village Hall, six twenty-three Uranium Avenue. And Board of Trustees regular meeting, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at five thirty PM. And if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Trustee Archuleta, motion seconded by Mayor Brambolo. Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Trustee Mercer.
Yes.
Trustee Archuleta.
Yes.
Mayor Brambolo.
Yes.
Thank you.